I call this meeting of the Onslow County Board of Education to order. Welcome and thank you so much for coming this evening as we conduct the business for Onslow County Schools. You know that we do have a certain amount of decorum that we like to manage here so that we're respectful of all people. And we have our rules that were right in the back. I'm not going to read those this evening. If I need to, you know that I will. But I think that everyone knows that we want to have civil discord at our meeting today. First important thing is to invite Reverend Chris Phillips from the River Church of the River of Life Church to our podium, and he will deliver our invocation. Thank you for coming tonight.
You're welcome. Thank you for having me. I'm told that teachers are coming back next week and school is starting at the end of the month, and so I feel to pray a strong prayer tonight. Amen? Let's pray. Father, we thank you for Onslow County Public Schools, and we thank you for all of the administrators. Lord, all of the wisdom and all of the decision-making that's gone into preparing for the classes that are about to begin. We thank you for every teacher, every teacher's aide, everybody that's working in the school system in maintenance, in any capacity, Lord. We pray blessing over them tonight. And we pray for our children, and we pray, Lord, that you would bless all of them. Many of them are coming from home life and home backgrounds that are difficult and dysfunctional, and we pray, Lord, that you would bless our teachers to really be miracle workers, that they would be able to show love to those kids and teach them. And we pray, Lord, that our schools would be safe this year, and we pray, Lord, that there would be ample provision for everything that is needed so that Onslow County Schools will be a blessing, and they'll be the best schools in the state of North Carolina in Jesus' mighty name. Amen.
Amen. Will you rise and face the flag and join the board as we lead in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
First item on our agenda of business is the approval of the agenda. Entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Still moved.
And we have a motion and seconded in discussion. Comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Next is the approval of the consent agenda. You see there are several items down there, and you've had that to look over. Fast form motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and seconded in discussion. Comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Now for the point of the meeting that we really enjoy the most is a good news spotlight. So this evening, we have some students who have put Onslow County on the map nationally, and I would ask John Shannon, our Director of Career and Technical Education Services, to come and to make these recognitions.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board of Education members, Superintendent Stout, and audience. Thank you for having me here tonight to celebrate these students from Richlands High School. Tonight is my pleasure to announce that not one but two of our Richlands High School graduates are national winners, placing third in their respective categories at the Skills USA National Conference that was held this past June in Louisville, Kentucky. Recent graduates Morgan Jarman and Jordan Garza received bronze medals in their events at the competition. Morgan competed in architectural drafting and Jordan competed in practical nursing. Competitors in architectural drafting competition were expected to complete a written test, a skills test, and design a house and do the floor plan for it. In practical nursing, competitors had to react to a real-life situation presented to them without knowing in advance what that situation would require of them. Both of these students will use these skills that they will take from these programs as they head off to college. Morgan will be attending NC State. She will major in engineering. And Jordan will be attending William Peace University and will have a major in biology and preparation for medical school. We would also like to acknowledge Mr. Ken Brown, Morgan's advisor, and Mrs. Mary Lanier, Jordan's advisor, for preparing these two students so well. I would also like to recognize Mr. Darren Kloniger, who had been the principal at Richlands High School with his support for Skills USA during the time these students were there. And I want to also recognize that at least one student at Richlands High School has advanced to the Skills USA National Conference in seven of eight years while he was there. Six students qualified this year and made the trip to Nationals. And I would like to also challenge Mr. Brad Staley. He is the new principal at Richlands High School, and he will be, I'm sure, supporting the Skills USA as well as the other CTSOs that we have. I would like to ask that the advisors and the students come up here to receive a certificate.
All right. Morgan, congratulations. And Jordan, congratulations. Thank you both, and thank you. Appreciate it.
Congratulations. Next, we'll invite Mark Bulres, our Director of Title I Services, and Joe Adcock from Modern Woodman. They will be making the next presentation.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Mr. Stout, audience. Each year, all of our elementary and middle schools participate in the Modern Woodman of the World speech contest. And across the country, over 960,000 students participate in the contest. Last year, we were very blessed to be here at this time recognizing one of our students from Dixon Middle as a third-place national winner. And I've kind of challenged our students this year as they progressed on to our regional level to, you know, that we had high expectations and everything. And so at this time, I'm going to ask Marcus Dowd, our regional winner from this year, to come forward with his family, and Dr. Helen Gross, the principal of Carolina Forest Elementary last year, if they will come forward at this time. Marcus was our regional state-level winner here from Onslow County Schools. He is fifth grader at Carolina Forest Elementary. The contest, the speech contest, involves students in fifth through eighth grade. Well, after winning our regional contest, Marcus advanced with the other state and regional winners to the national competition. And at this time, I would like to congratulate Marcus Dowd for his first-place national speech contest. I'd ask Ms. Joe Adcock from Modern Woodman to come up, and I think she has a couple more awards to present and announce.
Yep, we thank Onslow County for letting us participate in this. We've been doing this for, wow, since longer than I've been with the company, and I've been with the company for a little over seven years. And, yeah, last year we had a third place, but this year we had a first place in the nation, so that's pretty huge. So congratulations to you. This is presented to you. Thank you for your efforts. Along the way, Marcus has been getting a $50 check here, $100 check there. And now, because he's a first-place winner, Marcus gets a $2,000 bank account that will sit at Modern Woodman's Bank, earning interest for him for when he graduates from high school. He can use it for furthering his education. And this goes to the school as being our first-place holder, so thank you very much for that. We appreciate that. And once again, thank you for all your support in letting these kids do this because it's an amazing thing that they do every year with teaching them how to articulate in the written and verbal form, and I think that's huge. So thank you for letting us participate in that.
Dr. Easton, I believe you're up next with our continuous improvement and some more news about that.
Good evening, everyone. Madam Chair, members of the board, and our audience here tonight and at home. I want to take just a moment first and please have Maria Johnson, our principal at Northside High School, and also Carrie Cobb, who is the school's Advanced Applied STEM Academy Director and our CTE Educational Engineer, if they will join me up here at the podium. The National Career Academy Coalition completed a review of Northside High School's STEM Academy, and upon doing so designated the STEM Academy as a model academy. Many academies are reviewed based on the NCAC-10 National Standards of Practice for career academies, but very few are awarded model status, especially the first time. In their letter with the award, the team wrote, "It is evident that the passion of the school team, coupled with the support of the school administration and the intense focus of your business community, has created a sustaining program for students, parents, and the community. The rigor of the curriculum and the depth of your industry partnerships are to be commended. The academy will be featured on the NCAC's website and honored at the November NCAC National Conference." So I would like to take this moment and congratulate Ms. Johnson, Ms. Cobb, and all of Northside High School on this national recognition. Continuing with some great educators. In May of 2016, the Onslow County School System had the tremendous honor of recognizing and awarding some certificates and some really important recognitions to some of our school administrators. And I have to take just a moment of poetic justice. Our school administrators do an absolutely amazing job in the Onslow County School System. So to be recognized among your peers in some of these instructional areas as truly the best among the best for the 15-16 school year really is quite an award. So at this time, Chris Andre and Dr. Chris Barnes, if you would please join me at the podium. As these two make their way up here, Chris Andre is the principal at Swansboro High School, and Chris Barnes was last year's principal at Newbridge Middle School and is currently the principal at White Oak High School. And these two outstanding administrators were named the Onslow County Schools Tech Savvy Administrators of the Year. Dr. Donna Lynch, I do have to say this because she will see this eventually. Dr. Donna Lynch is on a Delta Airline plane as we speak this evening. She is trying to get back from Mississippi, and she was going to try to be here tonight, and it just didn't quite work out that way. So we will get her award. Dr. Donna Lynch was the principal at Jacksonville High School last year. She retired in July, and Donna, in her last year of service to the Onslow County School System, was named the Onslow County Schools Global Administrator of the Year. So I think we should clap for her just because hopefully she'll get to see it. At this time, I would like for Tia Boris to join us at the podium. Tia is the principal at Hunters Creek Elementary, and this young lady has really blazed quite a trail for us. Tia Boris was named the Onslow County Schools STEM Administrator of the Year. Kristy Bracy is our principal at Silverdale Elementary. Kristy Bracy was named the Administrator of the Year for Onslow County Schools Student Support, and that was a new category, and really built a model instructional support team at Silverdale Elementary, and we're just extremely proud of all of her success. So Kristy, congratulations. Vicki Brown, as she makes her way up here. Vicki Brown is our principal at Meadowview Elementary. And those of you who know a little bit about Meadowview Elementary know that that is our A-plus arts integration elementary school. Just some wildly talented children and teachers, and a very talented school administrator there who was named the Onslow County Schools Arts Administrator of the Year for the Onslow County Schools. And last but not least, Maria Johnson, come on back up here. Maria Johnson is our principal at Northside High School, and we pride ourselves on being an avid school system, really doing a lot of miraculous work in our avid program. For the 15-16 school year, Ms. Johnson was named the Onslow County Schools Avid Administrator of the Year. Ms. Olbrich, I think that's going to be a really great picture for you.
Thank you. You guys, you're welcome. Congratulations.
And Madam Chair, last but not least this evening, this is an exciting time of year because not only are we getting ready to start school for our pre-K-12 children, but many of last year's seniors are getting ready to go to college for the very first time. So I would like to share with the board, and it's included in your good news packet, our scholarship report results for the 2015-2016 school year. And as we do that, I think all of us would like to take an opportunity to thank last year's graduates because there was a lot of remarkable work that went on in this school system. Just to hit a couple of the highlights for you because I know you have the report in front of you, I will just call the audience's attention to the fact that in the 2012-2013 school year, seniors in the Onslow County School System were awarded $6.385 million in scholarships. Well, now I'm going to jump to the 15-16 school year, and you will see that that scholarship earning has more than doubled. In the 2015-2016 school year, Onslow County Schools seniors were awarded $14,453,000 in scholarships. So we are very, very proud of the productivity of our students. Just three schools that we would like to highlight from last year with a major increase from $974,000 in scholarship awards all the way up to $3.1 million. Northside High School really had a tremendous year last year, so let's give them a big round of applause. Also, we'd like to recognize another one of our high schools that increased their scholarship earnings by over $1 million. Richlands High School went from $1.4 million up to $2.4 million. So let's give those Wildcats a big round of applause. And last but certainly not least, and this was another million-dollar increase, and that is certainly not an easy feat, congratulations to Swansboro High School and our seniors from there who went from $1.6 million up to $2.6 million in scholarships. So congratulations. And Madam Chair, that's a lot of great news for tonight.
It is. Thank you. I know that we have one public service announcement that we want to share with you. I'm asking Mr. Williams if he would do that, please.
I do have that. When people on Saturday get done eating their shrimp out at the 2016 Sneed's Ferry Shrimp Festival, we would like to invite them all to come out here to Jacksonville and to go to Northside High School and the middle school in the afternoon where we're going to be featuring the 2016 Football Jamboree. This is an annual event that has a lot of participation. This year is going to be a really big system. We have 16 teams competing from all the surrounding counties, including Onslow County. It's going to be able to come out here. So this is an epic event. The cost to get in is a nominal fee to get in there. Come on out, drink lots of water. It's probably going to be a little warm out, but it starts in the afternoon, and you will really enjoy yourselves.
Hope you'll come out. That's really a great, great thing. Any of the other board members have any good news? I'd like to just point out to those of you who haven't met Mr. Merritt yet that he's our newest member on our board, and this is his second meeting since his swearing-in, and we're glad that he's with us, and we think that he's going to serve you, the public, quite well. Welcome. That's the end of the good news spotlight. If this is the only thing that you really came for this evening and you want to leave, you're welcome to. If you want to stay, we left for you to stay, but at this time, this would be a good time for you to take your leave. There's no one who signed up for the first public comment session, so we'll just go right on in with our business agenda again and go to the communications plan, which will be presented by Dr. Beth Folger, our Deputy Superintendent.
Well, good evening, Madam Chair. Good evening, Board of Education, executive staff, and audience members. Thank you for the opportunity tonight to share some of the good work that we've done in Onslow County Schools around our communication efforts for the 2016-2017 school year. And as you all know, my predecessor, Mr. Earl Taylor, who's not here tonight, left some awfully big shoes for us to fill, so we're still trying to fill those, and we'll share a little bit of how we're doing some of that tonight. As we're all aware, communication has changed dramatically over the past 20 years, and it continues to evolve. And we definitely, as a school district, want to make sure that we are maintaining or keeping up with that trend. In order to gain professional advice, we reached out to a local marketing firm here or agency here in Jacksonville called By His Design, and we asked them to conduct a branding communication audit for us this spring. They reviewed lots of materials, including the strategic plan, parent surveys, the website, they read school newsletters, social media, they went to our Facebook and our Twitter pages, and looked at many, many more materials as they conducted that audit. So tonight, I'm just going to highlight some of the pieces of the audit, some items that were in the audit, but if you'd like to read the full audit, it's already posted online under Community Affairs, and you'll see the full report there if you're interested in seeing the full audit. Well, let's start with the strengths. We always like to start with those, right? So let's start with the strengths that were found. So first of all, through our materials, they said that there was definite evidence of a strong collaborative partnership with businesses and with the community. Another strength, they said, was our technology adoption. And what they meant by that was that we are known in the community as being early adopters of technology, and that we're focused on really technology being around the teaching and learning process, and that using technology to advance learning of our students. Globally competitive focus, they gave us kudos for really being able to communicate that out. They felt like in our materials, we effectively communicated our competitive, our global focus, and that it was a real branding trait for our district. They felt like that was a real highlight and specialty of Onslow County Schools. Also, as you can see, the extensive and inclusive educational opportunities, and we all know this already, but we offer our students a plethora of opportunities, both academic and extracurricular activities. It's very important in our field of education now as schools are becoming much choice, as parents are really facing lots of choices with schools. As a school district, we offer a lot of those opportunities, which is quite critical in this competitive environment that we're in. They said that we consistently used the Onslow County Schools logo, so they didn't see five different logos, or it stretched out of shape a lot of time, or in neon bright colors, but that we consistently used our logo. And they said that we had a strong social media presence that allowed us to share information, but also for our families to engage back with us through the social media. So what did they say our weaknesses were? One of the things they said was a dated logo. And what they meant by that, they said, "You're known for technology. You're known for being innovative, but your logo doesn't reflect that innovation and that technology savvy." They said there were some inconsistencies in our communication, meaning in our materials, that we didn't have a cohesive look. Things, you couldn't tell that it was Onslow County document other than the logo because of different fonts and different colors used and different formats, and we just weren't consistent in kind of our marketing materials. Message match, they said that our messaging wasn't clear. Our key messaging that we really wanted to communicate it out to our families and to our community was not clear, so that we needed to define what those messages were. And also that we needed to make sure that we weren't just looking within at the district and saying how good we were, but that we were promoting messages that would appeal to our families and to our internal and external stakeholders in our community, which made a lot of sense. And then they said, "You know what? We, looking at the surveys, et cetera, think that maybe there's not as much intentional messaging, and the external community doesn't know as much about the school district. Internally, we know a lot about it, but externally, we need to increase external knowledge of what all we're doing in our school district." And then, excuse me, the website interface, and that just needed to be more intuitive and a responsive design, and so we'll be looking at that as well. So what were their recommendations? Their recommendations, the audits recommendations, along with Advanced Ed's recommendations when we went through accreditation, recommended that we have a formal communication plan in our district to make our messaging very intentional. And so they also suggested that we strengthen the brand identity and position, meaning that we make things more consistent, that we put our logo, our values out more frequently. The website, we've talked about, one of the things that they suggested that I had not, we haven't looked into yet but plan on, is using email opt-in marketing where you allow folks to sign up for your newsletters and other minutes of meetings and et cetera, and then legally we have to allow them to opt out, but then you grow your audience. So you grow your external and internal audience by doing that. And to expand social media audiences, so we are already using, obviously, Twitter and using Facebook, and wanted us to grow the audiences that we are connecting with through those social media. And then, obviously, making sure that we set aside the resources needed to make this come to fruition. So our team researched and networked with colleagues around the nation. We attended the National Conference for School Public Relation folks, and we used the audit recommendations as well as best practices to build a communication plan. I'm going to share with you a few highlights of the plan, but again, the entire plan is posted on the website and available for anyone to see. The plan's laid out with priorities, strategies, and tasks. There are five priority areas, and then each priority area has a set of strategies to accomplish the priority or to work towards that, and then the tasks are really the details of how you get it done. So for example, one of the priorities is strengthening the community support for Onslow County Schools, and the strategy is to create a key communicators network where we work with internal and external people that have a lot of influence in the community, and I don't mean wealth influence, I mean political or social influence, and we bring those, and we create two-way communication avenues with our key communicators. So that's just an example of one of the priorities and one of the strategies, and then when you get down to the task of that, it's very detailed about how you go about selecting people to serve on it, how often you meet, et cetera. So the plan has that level of detail in it as well. Included in the plan are five key messages that aligns with the Onslow County Schools image or brand, and the key messages are the communication frames that we'll use for our print materials, for our social media, for multimedia videos. It's basically what do we want our community to know about us? What is it that our community that we're going to share or tell, or that we think they want to know from us? And those key messages are that we have a multitude of opportunities for our students. As we all know, we have Avid, and we have IB and AP, and we have Odyssey of the Mind, and you heard, I mean, every month we're recognizing students for the accomplishments and lots of opportunities that they have. We have themed elementary schools, we have magnet schools, et cetera. And that message is that we have those opportunities so that students can excel and ensure that they are college and career-ready. Another key message is that we have SMART I don't mean wealth influence, I mean political or social influence, and we bring those - and we create two-way communication avenues with our key communicators. So that's just an example of one of the priorities and one of the strategies, and then when you get down to the task of that, it's very detailed about how you go about selecting people to serve on it, how often you meet, et cetera, so the plan has that level of detail in it as well. Included in the plan are five key messages that aligns with the Onslow County Schools' image, or brand, and the key messages are for - are the communication frames that we'll use for our print materials, for our social media, for multimedia videos. It's basically what do we want our community to know about us? What is it that our community - that we're going to share or tell, or that they - we think they want to know from us? And those key messages are that we have a multitude of opportunities for our students. As we all know, we have Avid, and we have IB and AP, and we have Odyssey of the Mind, and you heard, I mean, every month, we're recognizing students for the accomplishments and lots of opportunities that they have. We have themed elementary schools, we have magnet schools, et cetera. Another - and that message is that we have those opportunities so that students can excel and ensure that they are college and career ready. Another key message is that we have smart, talented students and teachers, smart, talented, and competent students and employees in our district, and that's what - who makes us who we are. We are a people organization. Another key message is that technology is a tool that we are early adopters of, that we believe advances the teaching and learning process. And we - the fourth message is that Onslow County Schools is fiscally responsible and that we use our resources wisely to create a safe and engaging learning environment. And the fourth one - the fifth one is really about that we believe in developing the whole child, and we recognize that we are developing tomorrow's leaders, and that we have a large responsibility for the common good of our community and our world. Another recommendation that the audit made was to strengthen our brand identity. And a brand identity is more than a logo. It's the most important part of a system's visual identity, and it's the most reproduced element of our brand. So as you can see on the PowerPoint, the refreshed logo, which was one of the, as you heard, one of the recommendations, and in front of the - in front of Madam Chair's computer is a refreshed logo. We felt very - felt like we wanted and needed to maintain the three faces because it represents what we're still about. It represents from early childhood to graduation. It represents young children. It represents that it's a - learning is a progression from young - you know, as you grow through. So we wanted to maintain that, and we just wanted to refresh the fonts and the colors to make it more kind of fresh and updated. And so one of the things I - when we met with the principals earlier and we talked to them about it, this was one of the little activities that we did. So I'm going to show you two logos, and have you just think to yourself for a second what you think of when you see this logo. So things that we've heard, obviously, are that it's a place to chat, you can work on a computer, you gather with friends, there's a barista, kind of has cool music going, a good quality coffee, expensive, you can buy merchandise in there, but it's kind of a cool hangout place, right? Cool place to go, get an expensive coffee, you can get a specialty coffee, a wide variety and good. All right? Now what do you think of this one? Okay, some things that we heard was that you get quick service, it's budget friendly, friendly to kids, run in, run out, good product. So these are not right or wrong. It's not good or bad, but it stands for something different. And as we talked about it, these logos, it's not the graphic that told you these things, the difference between Starbucks and Dunkin' Donuts, it's the experiences that we've all had with the companies or with the organizations. And that's what your brand is. Your logo is just a graphic that you want to signal in someone's mind, a good image and impression. The logo is just a reminder, but it should remind them of lots of other good things, quality things about the organization. So the logo represents the brand, but the brand are - is built on the experiences you've had yourself or that you've heard about. Well, the same thing goes for the Onslow County Schools logo. It's a symbol of our brand, and our brand is based on the experiences of our students, of our parents, of our community members, our teachers, our classified employees, our churches, and businesses that they've had with us. That's what our brand is. So every interaction we have with anyone is adding to our brand. When people see our logo, what is it that we want them to associate with? It's around our key messages. We want them to associate that Onslow County is an excellent school district that offers lots of opportunities for students to make sure they're college and career ready. We want our brand to say in people's minds, "Oh, this is a school district that uses taxpayers' resources very wisely." We want them to know that we are early technology adapters, and that we believe technology is - or that we focus technology on the teaching and learning, that we have - that we educate the whole child, that - so those key messages come back as what we want our brand to represent. And that's what we want to portray through every interaction, every print article, everything that we put out, we want to reinforce those key messages about our organization. So one of the things we did is we created an Onslow County Schools' Brand Style Guide. Again, the complete thing can be found online, and the style guide gives templates for all of our schools for newsletters, for letterhead, PowerPoint presentations, business cards, anyway, trying to create consistency in our communication and the way that we are branding our district so that it is recognizable to our stakeholders. A few other highlights, and I'm going to run through the next things very, very quickly, a few highlights from the plan. We have now a written incident communication process that we've shared with our principals, and we've a new technical, technology-driven way to report those so that we know what's going on in our schools. Another thing that we are using is Peachjar, and you'll hear more about this, but Peachjar is a digital flyer management program, and it allows community members to get flyers out to parents via smartphones and tablets, et cetera, instead of always in the bookbag home and thrown in the trashcan. And actually, the data show that more parents receive the flyers through their electronic devices than when we do send them home. And it'll also help our community agencies by not having to print 26,000 flyers, deliver to schools in bundles of 25 or 400, have somebody in the office, pass them out to all the mailboxes, and so it - I - we think it's going to be a great opportunity for our district to save on labor and time, but also good for our community. First year, we might - we may be running kind of a dual system, doing some of both while we get our community on board with that. Not on the PowerPoint, but also in the plan, we'll be - we'll be giving a perception, a public perception survey will be administered this fall. We have something new called Good News so that we can share the stories of our students and families and employees more frequently, and so there will be an - there is already an email address called goodnews@onslow.k12.nc.us, and any one family's parents, anyone can report a good news story. We'll be publishing a bi-monthly good news newsletter that gets that word out. It's another additional way beside just Good News Spotlight to celebrate. We'll beginning Super News, which will be a bi-monthly newsletter from the superintendent to internal employees, a way to keep internal employees more abreast of what's going on in the district. And we've started linking much more on the website, so when there are news releases and articles and all, we're linking those on the website so that would be more available. This year, we will have a faith-based partnership where we work with faith-based agencies and match them up with schools and what the schools' needs are for both academic and non-academic needs of students, whether it's food or reading buddies, et cetera, and so working on that. And then an achievement gap summit where we work specifically on some achievement gaps and how our community can help us overcome and provide some of the supports in schools for those achievement gaps. So our communication plan's aligned with the strategic plan. I was telling Dr. Esen earlier today that there are eight specific strategies in the plan for the communications department, and this first year's plan covers four of those eight. So we're going to be on target by 2021, Dr. Esen, to achieve our strategic plan, strategies, and goals. And so based on the recommendations, we've put this plan together using best practices. It is a one-year plan. There are some things that we know are very, very important that will be in year two, and those will include additional parent engagement, like a parent academy or a parent university. Also, we plan on in year two, having some major work on the website, and then also customer service, and those being three additional areas that we'll be working on in year two. So this presentation's only highlighted part of the overall plan. Thank you for your time, and I'll close by saying, you know, the plan's the easy part. It's making it happen that's the difficult part, so we'll need everyone to help us this year as we move through the plan.
Thank you, Dr. Folger. And I think that it's very important to note that this is kind of an evaluation of our own style of delivery to parents and to the community, so it's a welcome addition to what we're going to be doing. Other members of the board have any comments?
I do, Madam Chair. I want to commend the district for taking the initiative, coming in into the 21st century. I think it's a welcome thing that we're going to be looking at. It's very important that we communicate with the people and the methods that they normally communicate with. And any of you that have children or grandchildren know that it's hard to get somebody just to pick up a phone and talk with you anymore. If they're not emailing you, they're sending text messages to you, et cetera, et cetera. My experience in the past has not been education, it's been the business world, and I would hope that our business offices will be on this train as well. I see a lot of good things that we could do. Communication is one of the biggest things I think that we need to improve in the school district. We're a great school district, we have a lot of good things, but we don't tell it enough. We don't get the information out there enough, and we play catch-up sometimes when we have an incident rather than getting in front of it. And you've done a great job with getting in front of those things since you've been on board, so I really appreciate that. Some of the other suggestions that I might have, though, is that simple things like the board agendas. The board agendas could certainly encompass everything that's in there. The supporting documentation that goes with the board agenda could be out there. Our finances should be out there on as well. If I'm a student, a parent, or a teacher in a particular school, I should be able to go to a particular location and find out how much money we're spending, how much money we're allotted, how does that affect the overall educational process? And we've talked about that in the past, and I think it's something that we can continue to work on. But I think our business offices need to understand that they are an integral part of this educational process. You can't have education without the funding and all of the other ancillary things that goes along with that. And the parents, maybe not the students, but the parents are certainly concerned about funding. They're concerned about building new schools. There's no reason why we shouldn't have the contracts out there for the new schools, pictures of the new schools and the various stages of the construction. There's a lot of different things you can do with the website that we can get it out there, that we can inform the public, so that when we go back to the well and we say, "You know what? These two are great, but we've got three or four more that we need to build." We're not hitting the public with something that they don't already understand.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Thank you. I think it's a great idea, and I know that we're going to move forward, maybe taking some baby steps, but we'll get there. Any of the other members of the board comments?
Yes, ma'am, I have just a couple. When I took my seat on the board, I had no clue that this was being done, but I want to say job well done. You guys have really put together a good plan here. I'm not going to rehash any of the stuff Mr. Williams went over, but I did have two items I wanted to bring to your attention. It's what I think. Priority one, strategy one, calls for scheduling quarterly meetings for two-way communication, I guess, out in the public. It's a great idea. I think we should move that to the board meetings as well and give us a three or four-minute public comment section at the end of the meeting, sort of like the county commissioners do, to where we can respond to any issues that are brought to us. And also, your social media, we're doing a good job. I would like for us to research the possibility of maybe being able to stream these meetings live on social media. There's a lot of live videos being shown on, you know, Facebook and those areas now, and I just wonder what the feasibility of it is, because like, I myself, I don't get G10. So they do a great job on G10, but it takes me several days to be able to go back and see it. And that's just my thoughts, and I appreciate it. Like I said, good job, thank you.
Just to let everybody know, we are streamed on YouTube, and if you need that address or you need to know how to find out, Ms. Crowder would certainly be able to help you do that. But all of our programs, as well as our Academic Derby programs, Book Blast, all of those things are all available through YouTube.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is our - the second public comment session. We have participation section. We have one person, Dr. Joe Whirl, who has signed up. And Dr. Whirl, I know you understand the policy that, as it relates to the five minutes.
Madam Chairwoman, Board, I'm representing the Onslow Protect Our Students Group, and I'm here to say thank you. Thank you very much for what you've done protecting our students, and thank you for the entire community for - who spoke up and said no to shift North Carolina working with our children. The Onslow County School Board Policy 3540 on Sexual Education is excellent, and we commend you for it. We want to support your efforts to get a sexual education program that reflects the values expressed in this policy statement. Thank you again. We are most grateful for your stand to defend our children. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Whirl. There's no other business for the board, so I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
Remove.
I hear a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Have a good evening, folks, be safe going home. It's time to adjourn.